We need an order. This is the meeting of the RMLD Board of Commissioners. I understand we're being broadcast tonight on RCTV at this point, so we've got there. So basically, I'm going to read the code of conduct. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair. Our items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment and so in discussion.
Yeah, so we call the cab meeting to order too.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, first thing I have on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment? We do have one person on the Zoom.
It's a finance meeting.
Okay, so I'm his committee member. Okay, very good. Welcome.
Glad to have you here. Hi, everybody.
You have any words you want to speak?
No, I'm just listening, so thanks.
No, you're muted.
Yeah.
Oh, no words. Okay. Okay, I think you said no. Okay. All right, so the next item on my heading agenda is the Commissioner vacancy. First off, Mr. Stempak stepped down at this point. The committee met, Mr. Talbot, Admiral Lee.
Phil, those.
Show the shoes, okay? And basically, it was voted by the three members who were present that would have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to select a replacement that will serve through the next election at this point. So I understand that meeting will take place sometime in July. I understand at this point, the meeting between the Board and Selectmen. I encourage anybody to, you know, that's interested to get your name in with the Reading Town Clerk. You know, would be very helpful.
July 18th.
Go ahead. You want to say something?
July 18th is the joint meeting.
Okay.
And there's an application that Laura and Jim has.
Okay, so again, if you're interested, put your name in. We will hopefully get the best candidate we can possibly get, okay? All right, very good. And with that, I will go to item four. Item four is Zach Ventross, Director with the Markham LLP. Zach, you are up, okay?
Thank you, Phil. So my name is Zach Ventross. I'm the Audit Director who is in charge of the Reading Municipal Light Department's December 31st, 2022 audit. And tonight, I'm going to go through the financial statements and highlight some certain account balances, some certain account trends. I think Eric is going to pull up the financial statements up on the screen, so maybe make it a bit easier, so I can kind of direct you through. But if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask them, and we'll address them at that time. So before I jump into the financial statements, just a couple of quick notes. The first note is that generally, the department's financial statements are presented on a comparative basis. In this year, due to the implementation of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87 for leases, it did not make sense for the department to present on a comparative basis. So you're going to see just one year of financial information in these financial statements. And then next year, they'll be presented on a comparative basis again. Before I jump in, I think it's important to kind of have a takeaway or conclusion from my presentation here tonight. And I think that conclusion and takeaway from my presentation here tonight is that the department's in a good financial position. The department had positive turnbacks from your operating results. You have a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and then there was no management line. I'll kind of get into each of those throughout the course of tonight's presentation. So first, we're going to go to the first page after the table of contents. And the first page after the table of contents is the Independent Auditors' Report. This is essentially what the department hired us to produce. The department received a clean opinion, which means there are no exceptions. And this is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditing firm. And it's the same opinion the department has received in prior years. Next, I'm going to turn to page four, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The Management's Discussion and Analysis takes place on pages four through eight. This is a narrative summary of the results of operation. And this section also discusses major financial areas. So instead, it is simply sitting here and reading this to you. Actually, you want to jump right to page nine, which is the Statement of Net Position. I'll discuss the same thing on page nine, 10, and a few of the other pages that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So the first item I want to bring to your attention is actually something new for your financial statements this year. And that new item is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87 dealing with leases. It needed to be implemented by all municipalities across the United States, starting with your year ending, starting December 31st, 2022. And I'm going to kind of pinpoint where those are. They're in three spots, actually. You can see up here, I'm going to show on the screen, the very first one you see right here under current assets, you'll see your lease receivable. And that has a balance of $295,000. The second area where it's new on your financial statements is under non-current assets. You'll see there's another line item right here called lease receivable. And that has a balance of $2,321,000. And then the final area on your balance sheet where it's going to show up is right down here under deferred inflows. And it's going to be called related to leases, and that's got a balance of $2,616,000. So the two receivables are going to be offset by that deferred inflow. So it doesn't have any impact on your income statement or your net position. This accounting standard is all going to be on your balance sheet. And so what this accounting standard does, it basically says, in the past, there were capital leases and operating leases. There's no distinction anymore. It's just leases moving forward. So it asks that the department went through a process determining situations in where they were both the lessy and the lessor. And when it's determined that in situations where the department is the lessy, were not material and therefore not incorporated into your financial statements. However, there is some lease agreements in which the department is the lessor, and those were material to the financial statements. And primarily what that is comprised of is 11 lease agreements for fiber optic cable leases with Crown Castle. And those 11 lease agreements projected into the future are approximately about $2.6 million in receivables that the department will receive over the course of 2023 through 2031 from Crown Castle for these 11 lease agreements. So that was one of the big changes in the new items in your financial statements this year. Again, wasn't required to be in your financial statements last year. It is now required to be, and the department did go through that process, did do their due diligence, and it was implemented. Next line item I'd like to bring to your attention. There's a couple of line items below that lease receivable. The very first one, we're going to look at these together. The first one is land in construction and progress under non-current assets. And that has a balance of $5,929,000. It's actually about a $4.4 million increase from the prior year. Now, that increase is primarily due to some land that was purchased in Wilmington for a new substation for about $4 million. So that's why you see that increase in that land in construction and progress was the department made a purchase of land for about $4 million in Wilmington for a new substation. Right below that, you're going to see capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. And that's got a balance of $86,550,000. It's actually about a $1.3 million increase from the prior year. So the department had capital additions on this line item of about $6.4 million in the fiscal year 2022. But you also had depreciation expense of about $5.1 million. So that balance went up by about 6.4, but that was decreased due to your depreciation expense of about $5.1, which is why you see that increase of about 1.3. And some of the major capital item additions that the department made in the current year or in fiscal year 20 or calendar year 22 was about $1.3 million was spent on new poles and fixtures. $2.4 million was spent on overhead conductors. $1.2 million was spent on underground conductors and devices. That's something I want to bring to your attention on the asset side. I want to move down onto the liability side. And the very first one I want to bring to your attention is the very first line item under non-current liabilities. It's right here, it's called the net pension liability. The net pension liability had a balance of $5,358,000. It's actually about a $6.6 million decrease from the prior year. And I'm going to get into the reason for that decrease here in a moment. But there's a couple of things that I want that you should be aware of in relation to this number. First, I'll explain what the number is. The number is the Reading Municipal Light Department's proportional share of the total unfunded liability for the Reading contributory retirement system. And this figure is actually being presented as of December 31st, 2021. So this is the only number in your financial statements that's not being presented as of December 31st, 2022. It is presented as of December 31st, 2021. So keep that in mind when we're talking about some of the trends in relation to this figure. The presentation of one year in arrears is allowable per accounting standards, so there's no issue there. But what I want you to know is, as of December 31st, 2021, the Reading contributory retirement system was at about 91% funded. What we see as an average in the Commonwealth for this time period is between 75 to 80%. So having the retirement system at 91% funded is a good financial position for the Reading Municipal Light Department. And I had mentioned that that figure decreased by about $6.6 million. The reason for that decrease of about $6.6 million is primarily due to the investment results of the contributory retirement system for calendar year 2021. During calendar year 2021, the investment results for the retirement system came in greater than what was anticipated by about $21.5 million. So Reading Municipal Light Department's proportional share, if you will, of those investment results that came in greater than what was anticipated is about $5.7 million. And those investment results that came in greater than what was anticipated really helped reduce that liability. So that's why you see that decrease in that liability is because your investment results for the retirement system came in greater than what was anticipated by the actuary. The next item I wanted to show you was right below that. It is the net OPEB liability. And OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is essentially the projected health insurance payments for your current employees as well as your retirees into the future. And this number is actually determined by an actuary. It's largely unchanged from the prior. It's actually about $110,000 increase from the prior year. And I think what I'd like to do is actually go to the last page of the financial statements. Give you all a second to jump there.
What page number is that?
Forty-six.
Thank you.
Yeah. Perfect. So page 46 is some required supplementary information in relation to your other post-employment benefits liability in your trust funds. And it's really the schedule of the net OPEB liability. And I think that this is a great illustrative example. As you can see here, there's quite a few columns, but I want to focus on the 2022 column. And you can see the very first number under that 2022 column is your total OPEB liability. And an actuary was brought in to determine what that liability was. And the actuary determined that that liability was about $9,000,000 or $9,46,000. However, the department has put aside $4,770,000 into a trust that can be only used to pay for this liability into the future. So as you see down here, that this liability is about 53% funded. And the reason that that's important is because most cities and towns are anywhere from 0 to 10% funded on this liability. But light departments in the Commonwealth, they're generally between 30 and 40% funded on this liability. So to have, in comparing to your contemporaries in the Commonwealth, Reading Municipal Light Department is a bit ahead of your contemporaries in regards to beginning to fund this liability. And that's a good financial position for the Light Department to be in. It's going to be viewed favorably by your users of the financial statements. I'm going to jump back. And I'm going to jump to page 10. The first line item I want to bring to your attention is actually the total operating revenues. And you can see your total operating revenues has a balance of about $100,202,000. It's actually about a $13.8 million increase from the prior year. Now, that increase is primarily due to two items. The first item is that the department increased their rates on January 1st of 2022. And this is the first rate increase on your base rate since 2018. And primarily, it was about a 6% increase on most of those base rates. It does vary a little bit. But again, for purposes of tonight's discussion, primarily about 6% increase on those base rates. So that's the first reason for you see that increase in your operating revenues. The second was is that there was some global volatility in the purchase power market. And you can actually see that your cost of purchase power increased. So if we go one line item below that, you'll see purchase power. It's under your operating expenses. And that at a balance of $64,682,000. It's actually about a $4.4 million increase from the prior year. And that increase was primarily passed along to the customers here of the Reading Municipal Light Department. So that's the second reason why you see that increase in those operating revenues is because there was a corresponding increase or a proportional corresponding increase in your purchase power that again was passed along to the ratepayers of the municipal light department. And then the last number I wanted to bring to your attention is actually three numbers from the bottom. It is your change in net position. And your change in net position this year was about $9.8 million. So again, you had positive results of operation during the calendar year. Next, I'd like to turn to page 11, which is your statement of cash flows. In your statement of cash flows, the very first bucket up here at the top that I want to bring to your attention is your cash flows from your operating activities. And if we look at your total net cash provided by operating activities in total, that operating net cash provided by operating activities was $14,854,000. So the reason I want to bring that one to your attention is to kind of show you where the department is utilizing those funds from your operating activities. And if we go down a couple buckets to cash flows from capital and relating financing activities, it's right here. You can see that the net cash used for capital and relating financing activities is about $10.2 million. And the primary chunk of that is acquisition and construction of capital assets. So the department spent $10.8 million on the construction and acquisition of capital assets during the year. So the department's primarily using the cash that's provided by your operating activities to make capital improvements in the infrastructure of the Reading Municipal Light Department. And that's everything I wanted to bring to your attention here tonight on the financial statements. Are there any questions or comments?
I have questions. I mean, is this the end of your?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sid. Okay, all right. So questions were like, what are going to be some of the major risks for us as an organization? I just, I made a long list of questions, so I'll just read them all out if you don't mind.
Do you want to go one at a time, or?
Let me just mention them, and then you can see if you can lump them together. And then, so we know RMLD is a profitable enterprise. But I think this year, you know, and audit is always looking backwards, right? Audit is looking backwards, but looking, going forward as an entity. I expect we're going to have major capital outlays that are being planned, right? And we are also in a high, higher than normal interest rate environment. And we are also in a higher energy cost environment. So from that perspective, you know, what we use, what should we be concerned about? And I think you've been involved in the audit for a while, so you know the history of the organization. So that's my detailed questions. And then I had a question about the OPEB numbers. And I was looking at the, so what causes the total OPEB liability to change year to year? And the numbers like in 2021 were 55%. In 2022 was like the net position, or like I think the net OPEB number was 52.81. So it had started increasing from 2017. It had gone from like 28% to like 55%, and then it came down to 53%. So I just want to understand that. Is there anything we should be doing differently? And the last question is that there have been some changes in the personnel at RMLD that have historically had to interact with you. So, you know, what kind of interaction have you had and any feedback on that? So I can repeat these questions, but.
So why don't you, Zach, why don't you start with the OPEB first?
Okay, I did write them all down. I think I may have gotten them all.
Why don't you start with the OPEB?
Okay, so for OPEB, I think a great illustrative example of the OPEB. Let me find the exact page, but it's going to be in the note disclosures of the financial statements. Page 36. So on page 36, we have the changes in the net OPEB liability. And it provides maybe a bit more clarity on what kind of goes into that. We can start right at the top here with the balances as of the beginning of the year. And if we focus on the total OPEB column, that's going to be determined by an actuary. So the department does hire an actuary to come in and determine that number. And then we do some audit work on that number to make sure it's reasonable and fairly stated. So as you can see that there are, you have, you know, service and interest costs that will increase it. And then if there are any changes in benefit terms, there was a slight change in benefit terms that increases that liability. There are changes in assumptions. So for example, if they assume that the retirement age is 65, but they're going to change that assumption and now say, well, actually, we think that people are actually going to start retiring at 67, that'll increase the liability. So if they change any of those assumptions, sometimes they will decrease the liability.
Then actually come down, right? It was like around $11 million or something came down to like $9 million. If you look at the numbers over years, yeah.
I don't know specifically the change from year to year to year.
I was looking at page 46.
Forty-six. There must be an assumption change or a difference between expected and actual experience is probably the driving force of those total OPEB liabilities.
In my sense, was it like a headcount reduction that caused this change or something?
I can certainly look into that for you. I don't have that information off the top of my head. When was it $11 million?
In 2018, sorry, 2019.
I can certainly look into what was the change in, from really, it looks like 2020 to 2021. And I can get back to you on that one as to a specific. It's probably, if I, in educated guess, it would probably be a change in assumption or it would be a difference between expected and actual experience. The difference between expected and actual experience, that does have like a very similar impact to change the assumptions. Essentially, what that is, is they'll say, well, we're assuming that people are going to retire at 65. And then they'll look at what the average is of actual retirees, and then they'll factor that in as well. So that's the difference between expected and actual experience. But if they were to change their assumption into their calculation, into their formula, that would just be a change in assumption. So generally, those are the two big driving forces of the change in the total OPEB liability. To answer your question about why did it go from 55% to 53%? Again, if you look at page 36, the driving force of that is right here, is your net investment income. It's actually a loss this year. So the market wasn't as strong in calendar year 22. So the department actually lost about $581,000 on their investments in that OPEB trust fund in calendar year 22, which is why you see that decrease in that funding.
Good year for returns.
A good year for what?
Twenty-one was a good year for returns.
Yes.
Did it happen to be that we had finally put it into the stock market in 2021 after five years of discussion?
That may have been the case. I know that in being.
The next question was, you had talked about the fact there is no management letter that is coming out to the department. But you did say there are some recommendations that you made to the department. So why don't you cover that?
Sure.
Cover that.
So I'm going to jump to page page 12. So I mean, I guess I'll explain maybe what a management letter is. So in addition to proving out the numbers and the figures in the financial statements, as we go line item by line item, doing our audit tests on them to make sure that they're fairly stated, we'll also look at the financial reporting processes as well as the internal controls of the department. And if we think that anything should be improved, we would recommend that in a formal management letter. We did have a couple of recommendations, but we left them just as verbal recommendations. We didn't think that anything was serious enough to warrant a formal management letter. And I've talked about it with Ben. And the biggest issue that we had this year was actually this line item right here. This due to or due from proprietary fund, which is the electric fund. So at year end, the department did make a contribution to the OPEB trust fund, but didn't factor that contribution into the general ledger for the OPEB trust fund. They had it going out of their electric fund, but didn't have it coming into the OPEB trust fund. So we had to make a small audit adjustment to account for this $274,000 contribution that was made by the department, but just didn't get into the general ledger or the bank in a timely manner. So I talked about it with Ben. He showed me his calendar. He's already got it in his calendar to make sure that he's making that change for 23 and make sure that that's not going to be a problem moving forward. So that was, you know, one of the items and recommendations that I had for the department this year.
So the last question was the risk, right?
Yeah, what are the major risks?
Okay, so first off, I'm going to ask you, and then maybe Greg would have to address this too. So you had more of the department view. So you actually do a risk assessment?
We do a risk assessment, looking at the internal controls. Not necessarily as in-depth with the industry. I will turn it over to Greg on that one, because he's going to be much more knowledgeable and be able to speak to that adobably, much more intelligently than I can. We certainly look at, you know, the financial stability of the department. And currently, we don't see any issues or concerns there. Like I said, I think the department's in a good financial position. As far as any industry, I'll turn it over to you, Greg, if that's okay?
Sure. Yeah, in terms of, if I can put the category of risk, external risk, and then I'll put it in the category of operational risk. So from an external risk perspective, we'll talk about this a little bit later in the general manager update. But there is the regional electric network, which is managed by ISO New England. They do a very, very good job of managing it. But as we transition from a traditional fossil fuel-based generation system to more non-carbon, primarily solar and hydro, significantly more hydro, significantly more solar and significantly more wind. The nature of the generation will be much more intermittent. That combined with the fact that the overall load, the industry estimates are that in the next 20, 25 years, the load due to electrification, which is driven by the mandate for decarbonization, that will put, that combined with having more distributed generation route is going to require significantly more transmission assets. All said and done, and then there's a question of winter reliability over the next, realistically, over the next 10 winters. So all that means from our perspective, if our, not if, our mandate as a utility is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy, keyword being reliable. And so one of the risks that we are working hard to mitigate is the reliability, specifically if ISO New England, particularly in cold winter months, makes a request for load reduction. And if they do load reduction, then we, along with all the other customers, need to do, you know, typically, they started a 10% load reduction. In the absence of generation or storage, we would have to turn customers off. We do not want to do that. So one of the things that we're doing to, so that's a risk. And one of the things we're doing to mitigate risk is within territory generation and storage. And we'll talk about storage in the general manager update as well. And it's not a new theme. We've been talking about that all along. I think the other, the other risk factor in terms of managing the business is having a very, our best understanding of what the load looks like going forward. And when I say load, it gets back to kilowatt hours consumed by our customers. It's not just the total for the year, but it's what the shape of it looks like, not only season by season, but, you know, over the course of the day. And matching that load profile with an intermittent supply is another risk factor that we are aggressively working on with data analytics and storage and within territory generation. You know, those are, from an internal operation perspective. The last internal operation perspective is going to be team and talent. You know, we, as you pointed out, we've made some significant changes in terms of our senior leadership. I'll let Zach comment from his experience and his observation working with us. But, you know, we've got another two positions to fill at a senior level. We have a very strong management team. The management team is dedicated to fulfill the vision, the charge of reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. So I don't think that's a big risk, but, you know, if the management team leaves for whatever reason, that's a, that's a no.
That's always a risk.
Always a risk, right? I mean, you understand intimately well, right? These organizations are driven by people. Everybody from the facilities team up to the general manager seat, everybody contributes to it. So I don't foresee the team being a big risk, to be honest. But I think the regional risk, which we have plans and will work on to execute, and then really understand what the load, the near-term load forecast, those are the big pieces.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm very well calibrated with everything you said. What I wanted to really see was from an auditor's perspective.
Sure.
You know, what was the biggest concern you have? And that, so this piece I know very well. It's the auditor's viewpoint. I just wanted to know that.
I don't have any concerns or I don't think that there are any risks from a financial or an audit perspective. Yeah, I don't see anything from that perspective that you should be concerned about. You did mention the change in the personnel and how it was from last year to this year. I'd say that there was no change. The department with last year's administration and this year's administration, both were very well-prepared. And Uh, a- a- and um their financial records were in good, good order. Anytime we asked a question, they were extremely timely in providing us the information. Uh, from my perspective, it was fairly much status quo. Um, working with Ben and and Greg was a pleasure this year. Um, in in nothing to be concerned about or anything along those lines.
Thank you.
Okay. You said, you said, thanks. All right, so for the questions. Uh, just a couple of things that I report from the uh I'm on the town of Reading Audit Committee before we go to the sub, the board subcommittee on this.
Bill, just a little louder, or just my closer, just a little louder.
A little louder? Okay. Closer here.
Thank you.
There we go. Look at my, so the the town of Reading Audit Committee had a couple of concerns. On page ten, where it says capacity and transmission adjustment, there is a uh a transposition uh amount there that it will be corrected in the final version. There was also a question raised, um, that I raised about the uh when you figure out the lease, you're supposed to use the incremental borrowing rate. And there's a, and they're not sure whether that actually factored into the, into the calculation of the lease receivable, the lease receivable accounting that you see here. So in essence, the the uh the town audit committee uh basically did recommend to the board of commissioners to accept the audit dated June eight, two thousand twenty three, but we made a subject to the correction of the capacity and transmission adjustment amount on page ten, and further research on the lease accounting with possible correction thereon. Okay, so that was the recommendation that was made by the uh by the town, the town of Reading Audit Committee. And I will turn it over to the board subcommittee now.
Thanks. Um, this follow up was an excellent presentation done by Zach, and there were some great questions by the board. And and again, I was going to mention Phil's on the town audit committee. So with myself and Marlena were in the subcommittee, and um we, we took Phil in the reading audit committee's lead. They had some great, they did have some really good questions that they were asking um as it went through, but Marlena and I um also agreed with the ready on the to accept the report as presented.
Subject to?
Subject to Phil's changes, and we did capture on our suggested motion, the same identical language that Phil input.
Okay. Any questions on that? No, no, see none. Okay. So um okay, first up, um, this, the motion has listed uh to accept the uh audit. It has list, list, listed as Malanson. Will this report go under the name of Malanson? We're going to mark him.
Yeah, we'll go under Malanson. So maybe I should take a quick step back and explain to you folks. Mal- Malanson was uh your CPA firm and has been for for a number of years. We were recently acquired back in January by uh Mark. Markham is one of the fifteen, uh, top fifteen largest accounting firms in the country. So the audit team, the principal, the individuals who were working on a day to day basis with writing in the audit strategies we took did not change. Essentially, the only thing that's going to change is the name of the letterhead, but that's not going to happen for this year. This will be the last year that we issue reports under uh Malanson. Uh, so we have up until June thirtieth to issue reports under Malanson, and then anything after June thirtieth will be issued under the Markham title. Uh, so you know, next year, we'll be issuing uh uh the, we'll then we'll be issuing the financial statements again, but we'll be issuing the independent auditors report, and the only change will be it's just the the letterhead from Malanson to Markham will be the only change.
And it costs us more?
Nope. So uh Markham took the contracts on and said, we're not changing the prices.
So just to be clarified, the the suggested motion is going to change, it should say move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners accept the two thousand twenty two audit report from Malanson fiscal year ended December thirty first, two thousand twenty two, as presented subject to the correction of the capacity and transmission adjustment amount on page ten, and further research on the lease accounting um with possible correction thereon. And that that's on the recommendation of the RMLD Board of Commissioners, sub, sub audit committee. Got it, Eric? Erica? Okay. Make them, you make them, make the motion. I just, you, I just say that you moved what I just read.
Move what Phil said.
Right.
Second.
Okay. Any comment, any comments from the C A B or we, we said on that? Just trying to make sure, any questions? Okay. All right, it's been moved, seconded. Is that seconded? Okay, Marlena seconds it? Now, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Suppose that motion carries four zero. All right, we're on to the minutes.
Mr. Pacino, if I could just make a quick comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to thank Greg and Ben and the entire RMLD staff uh for all their involvement in in this process. It's a, it's a, a, you know, not an easy undertaking, and they were getting very well prepared for us, very timely in their responses, and this is the first set of financial statements that our firm is issuing, uh, or our office firm is issuing. I can't really say firm, because it's your nationwide for our December thirty first uh audit. So again, kudos to them, and again, just want to thank them for their entire uh process, very professional, very well prepared for us.
Yeah, we thank you, we too, Zach. I mean, your, your presentation's been very helpful and very informative here, so. And I understand you will be staying around in the new, with the new firm.
Yes, I will. Not going anywhere.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. You're welcome to stay if you like.
Vivek.
All right, let's move on to the, to the minutes. Do I see, I have a motion on the minutes?
The RMLD Board of Commissioners accept the twin, oh, excuse me. Um, who did the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the open session meeting minutes of the November ninth, twenty, two thousand twenty two, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty two, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty two, meetings on the recommendation of the general manager and the board secretary.
That second?
Second.
Marlena seconds it? Further, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Suppose that motion carries four zero. Vivek, you're up.
Thank you. So uh for the cab minutes, just from a procedural point, there was some changes that we need to make. And I've discussed this with Erica.
Good.
And so these were like, so what we could do is we could so I I I could point out the changes. I'll, I'll come.
This is the high, this was a
Island.
Island.
Yeah.
I, would it be fair to characterize that as a more of a typo than a major change, or is there more than that?
I, I, there's, there's a few changes.
There'd be a change.
I just, I just make a note and I mention them, so that's why.
Go ahead. Okay.
Okay, so the first one, so like on in the document, it was on the, on in the PDF that was given to us, was on page eighty six. But here, I guess in this document, it will be on page right, it's, it's about the NEPA conference, about NEPA conference. Yeah, so this is page six of the cab minutes, page six, the cab minutes. So the spelling of Highland, like, is, is the Highland name, so like Highland is H Y L A N D. And I also said that, you know, that the, the way some of this is written is not right, doesn't make sense. So there's language I would change. And because, and there was also a point, it says that Mr. Sony suggested that heating loads may surpass. Uh, what actually I said was that Kelly Detwiler said that, so it's not me saying it, it was, I I just mentioned that Kelly Detwiler said that heating loads would be higher. I actually checked my notes.
So you got these minutes?
Yeah, I was quoting someone else, and then, yeah.
We get these minutes and reprint it and approved at the next meeting?
No, Erica will, uh, so we will, I I'll put in the language, Erica will record it, and so we can say that we can accept the changes as suggested by Vivek, so. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not my, it's not my minutes, but I would my personal recommendation would be that you hold off and get approved next month, at the next. That's up to you.
We can do that still.
Okay, okay, fine. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking some, you're talking some changes here.
Spelling.
Spelling, and just your context.
And where he's just he's just
Yeah, and and also that, you know, the, the, this, the, the next paragraph after that, there was one paragraph that's doesn't read quite right. So, okay, fine, I I can, we can deal with this next time. Okay, so we'll just take it offline.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do it next time.
You know what?
All right, okay. Okay, fine.
Okay.
All right, so we'll pass it next time.
We'll hold off on that, okay? We move to item eight, which is the NEPA, the Northeast Public Power Conference at this point, so um, we need to actually approve, uh, because approve Greg to go since that's part of his contract. Uh, also, we need to know which commissions would like to attend. I am planning to attend, so.
Okay, keep going.
We lose somebody?
No.
Yeah.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Greg Reep Fips travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association NEPA annual conference to take place August twentieth to the twenty third, twenty twenty three, at the Mystic Marriott Hotel in Groton, Connecticut.
Is that seconded?
Second.
Yep, I'll take Marlena. She said first. All right, it's been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That carries four zero. Uh, just, yeah, make just a motion. You're fine with that.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners move for all commissioners that are interested in attending, travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association NEPA annual conference to take place August twentieth to the twenty third, twenty twenty three, at the Mystic Marriott Hotel in Groton, Connecticut.
Okay. That's seconded?
Second.
Dave seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Is that motion carries?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's, it looks like a good conference. Um and can we have a motion?
I move that the Citizens Advisory Board approve for all members that are interested in attending, travel to the attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association Annual Conference to take place twenty twenty three of twenty, yeah, two thousand twenty three at the Mystic Marriott Hotel in Groton, Connecticut. Well, second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, very good.
And uh, I think like last year, Greg, you had written up a summary of that. I think it'll be great if you can do it again this year.
I have, I will do that. I'll share it internally and with you guys as well.
Thank you.
All right. Interesting, August the twenty third will be my birthday.
All right.
There you go. All right. So we go to item nine. Greg, you just set up, or you're gonna, we need to go direct to bill?
Directly to bill.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Um, so I'm, I'm here tonight to present two um proposed rates that we, we are not ready to implement yet, but we want to prepare you for the fact that we are developing these rates. Um, and um seeking your input on those. Um, so one is an economic development rate. Um and, and the, the goal of the, the economic development rate is to um structure an electric grade that helps promote business growth in our communities. Um, we know that um, that, that our, our M L P, the, the benefit of an M L P is that we're able to um, keep rates relatively low. We've been very successful at doing that. Um, that is attractive to businesses, but we understand we could be more attractive to businesses. And not only that, but the, the large stable steady around the clock loads that larger commercial and industrial customers bring help us keep rates low. It, it serves as a very um, large block that allows us to buy power uh around the clock at lower prices. So the more that we can build that base load in our territory, the more all of our customers will benefit from. And not only that, but if we use it as an economic development tool, um, it also increases jobs in the area. It will also increase the tax base, um, and increases the, you know, the ripple effects of having more business here, so the, the vibrancy of the community. Um, and specifically for RMLD, it also improves our economics if we have uh higher revenue, that's not only during peak times, but around uh that, that is not dependent on season. Um, so the development that we're looking at, um, it's looking at an introductory discount that, that will be for a relatively short term, um, sort of like a tax abatement works to attract uh new businesses. Um, we'll focus on larger loads, because again, those are the ones with the most value. Um, and it will, there are certain line items that we would um provide a discount on um that we could absorb uh and then get the benefits of the load growth as that uh customer remains on the system. Um, so we want to make the, we want to target a discount percentage that um that is meaningful to a company looking to either expand their operation in the territory or relocate to the territory. Um, and it's a, a, a really an opportunity for us to expand the time of use rates as well. Um, so this will, you know, the results of this, we hope will be, it strengthens uh our financials. Um, we saw earlier that they're strong, but they can always be stronger. Um, and uh we know that large businesses really have a sophisticated um site selection process, and this is something that they would take into account when they're looking at uh at relocating uh to an area. Um, and then again, we, we believe that it will support um the economic objectives for all of the towns that we serve. So on the next slide.
Well, Bill, a quick question. If I understood you properly, you said that an increase in the base load has benefits to the other rate pairs as well?
Yes.
And how does it, how does that uh work?
So i- if we can contract for around the clock power, um, it, the, the, that tends to be a, a lower uh cost per megawatt hour than, you know, buying it during peak periods. So if you can increase the block of power that we're buying at that lower cost, it lowers our average overall cost of energy.
What if, what if the, the new load though is, is coincident with the peaks?
That, that's why we want to couple it with a time of use component.
Yeah.
And that'll be his next slide. I think the other, the other big picture, the idea behind this is to do, to um create incremental load, and you understand, right? Part of our cost structure is very well is tied to usage.
Yeah.
And part of it's fixed. So our, our goal here is to increase usage against the fixed base, so our fixed, the the cost of our fixed base on a per kilowatt hour basis is going to drop down. So that's, that's part of the drive. The same thing we're doing with air source heat pumps.
Yep.
Well, that's in a nutshell, more, more, more variable usage against the fixed.
So you wouldn't anticipate that the incentives offered to new businesses would adversely impact existing rate pairs?
No, well, we would take a long view on that. So what we'll do is we'll analyze it over a period of time. Um, and and look at the economic impact. So the, the initial discount might have some impact, but we think it's an investment in getting a larger customer to be in the territory um, with, with the, the goal of keeping rates lower over the long, longer term.
Vivek, do you want to say something?
Just one question also. So like, in addition to rates, the other attractive piece is time to power?
Is what, available power?
No, time to power.
Time to power.
That means how long it'll take someone to get that kind, because like, if it's a large industrial customer, they come in, they have a high demand, and like, you know, whether you're in a position to supply that power, and I've heard people use that term, time to power becomes a decision factor for, for customers. You, you've dealt with some of that.
Oh, I understand, internally, yes.
So, so, so that's something that we'll have to think about.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a very good point. And we would, you know, the idea is that we would set this rate be negotiating with these customers that are looking at either locating here or expanding their operation. That would give us they need time to develop whatever they're investing in here, and that will give us the runway we need in order.
Yeah, because the flip side of a discount is time to power, may you may be able to charge a premium, and I'm just throwing.
Oh, on getting it faster. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, no, that's a good point. Thank you. So here are the two areas we'll be focusing on. We, we don't want to focus on the energy and giving a, a discount on the energy. Uh, we want to focus on the fixed components, because those represent our fixed costs. Um, and again, another if we increase the denominator of megawatt hours sold, then um uh, we're able, for our fixed costs, we're able to spread those fixed costs over more megawatt hours, and that also drives down the cost for other customers. Here, we would be, that, that's why we're focusing on the fixed cost for the discount. We won't be focusing on the energy cost. Um, we'll be focusing on both the, the demand and the um, the, the P P C T charges, which are capacity of transmission. Um so the, the, the total, you know, we, we target a total bill reduction um of Um, so the, the, the total, you know, we, we target a total bill reduction, um, of, uh, ten to twenty percent. And as the numbers here show, um, we would have to discount the fixed costs, uh, at a higher rate in order to achieve those, uh, those somewhat modest ten to twenty percent discount. Um, because the fixed costs, um, make up about sixty, uh, two thirds of the cost of delivery of the power.
So Bob, Bob, Bob was first and then I'll go over here.
Yeah, just a quick question, you know, um, I like the concept, but from our perspective, this is a long-term contractual type agreements, I would think, because you're, you have to build something in order for that, these larger costs, your, 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 your standard costs, they're going to be uh, 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 associated with it, like if you build it, you need it, you build it, you pay for it. But a lot of times people's loads don't materialize. So you, you're, you're left with, oh, hey, you said ten megawatts, you're using three, you know, at the end of the day. Yeah. Uh, you know, because they don't want to pay for them, they wouldn't become more efficient as soon as they come out of the gate. So just a, a cautionary note, you know, you're going to offer something, they're going to enter a contract, but then whatever contracts you build, if you, if you don't get to a certain baseline usage, you can't, you can't get a discount. I mean, that, that's just reality.
Yeah, so, so this rate will have a minimum level, right? Um, it'll have a time period and then any, after the next time, any capital investments, like additional lines to feed it, that would be, that would be under our state, same, standard, same program where we would build them directly for the actual cost. This would be tied just to the actual usage, so it'd go up and down with the usage, but there would be a minimum. And the other thing that we, the, the structure behind it, um, originally it was intended to attract new customers, but we also want to encourage customers that are already in our territory to continue to, to build out in our territory. So we're not going to exclude it to be purely a new customer, but some that go, you know, whatever. And that's part of the thing that, that is not quite finished with the analysis, but wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like. And this, this feedback is actually very helpful for us in terms of things that we think about and refine. But you know, what, what's that minimum threshold? And then we might put a cap on it, we'll certainly have a time cap on it, but we might have a, a kilowatt hour time, uh, maximum on it as well in case they're actually over, going back to Ken's point. And at that point, then we go into our, our capital base, having to create a fixed base, having to create more, so there's additional analysis. The real intention here was to, while our industrial and commercial rates are very low, they're very, very competitive. Um, there is a lot of interest in terms of companies coming to the region and we want, um, we really want load growth coming to our area. And you know, there's other factors, electricity is just one factor, you know, water and sewer and access to ninety-three and one twenty-eight are all factors. So this is, this is a small piece, but it, it is, it is trying to work in concert with the economic development, um, of the various towns as they try and attract new customers in. And not only do we have good rates, but there's also this near-term economic development rate as well, that's the intention behind it. There are a couple of comments over here, sorry.
Well, I guess to, to your point about the rates already being attractive, I mean, that's, there's a substantial, uh, difference between any investor utility options that they've got. Sure, so this little increment of additional advantage, uh, worthwhile, is that, is that actually?
Well, we need to determine that and what the, what would be meaningful to a customer when evaluating it. It's, it's a good point, we need to have those.
How, how do you do that? How do you determine if it's meaningful versus the point made about, so it's already the lowest game in town?
Yeah, although I would say even though we're, we're low, what, you know, we're, we may not be the lowest because there are other MLPs, right, that are, that are nearby, like Peabody and, um, uh, but I, I think we need to have those conversations with our commercial key account customers and ask them, you know, what their plans are for expansion and if they're looking at alternative sites, um, and what are the things that would make them want to, uh, select, uh, you know, one of our towns as where, where they would expand their business. But I think we do need that input from the key customers to understand what they're.
I'm trying to remember if in ten years that's ever been a case of a company, at least that came to our board, where they actually surfaced that they, they were looking to make a deal with us to have a discount or some special thing done for them, maybe it happened at the staff level and we.
Oh, it does happen, okay, then. Yeah, and we're, and, and, you know, be, because of us being an MLP and there's legal requirements in terms of us setting rates, we have to be consistent with everybody. Yeah, that's why I want to try and create this so that we can create a little incentive. It's, it, we don't know if it's going to move the needle, just the fact that we have it, um, is going to be important. Um, and then, you know, back to your point, right, economically, we'll make sure that it doesn't hurt the other customers, but, but there is a underlying premise that load that stays around, you know, that the airplane, Bob. Um, you know, we want load to stay here, right? Because it gives us more volume, gives us more revenue, gives us more, I mean, what we're really trying to do, our, our network is right now roughly about forty-eight percent, you know, capacity utilization of our network is about forty-eight percent, you know, some fifteen, which is not, which is pretty typical. And, you know, all the things that we're trying to do is to encourage and, and, and move that up. And whatever that number works out to be sixty percent or seventy percent, it'll never be a hundred percent, we don't want it to be a hundred percent, we need to have a buffer in there. But where we load the curve and, and, and driving the curve up is something we want to do and want to do it sooner rather than later. Back to the discussion we had on the financial side, that revenue, right? So right now we are ratepayer funded. Um, we'll do a short summary, I'll do a short summary in terms of some of the additional grants. So we're trying to pull additional capital in to the organization to fund this growth. But what is clear is that growth is coming and so we want people, so we're trying to make sure that when companies relocate, they relocate here. And this is just one mechanism. Other, and if, so we have more analysis to do, but, and that's why we wanted to kind of get initial, you know, view out to you. What do you guys think, you know, comments? We feel pretty strongly this is valuable. Do we think, you know, we might have one or two customers that, that take up, to take us up on at any given time? Um, I don't think it's going to be significant, the fact it's there, you know, we're, we're working pretty closely with the Town of Wellington, um, team. And, you know, this is, it, it's just part of a bigger package, right? And so anyways, that's the, that's the background.
Okay, um, the, the next rate was the industrial coincident peak rate. Um, you know, we currently have a peak demand reductions, um, credit program for customers that select to, to be in that program. Um, it's been working fairly well, um, but participation is, is lagging and the, one of the issues with it is that, that there's a time lag between the behavior of them reducing their peak and receiving the reward. So basically they receive the reward in the next calendar year for what they did in the previous year. So we think that a, a real-time rate that, that prices their behavior in that month, uh, will help, help them connect the reward with the behavior more closely and will be able to tie it, um, together. So the idea would be to create a, um, a rate that charges them for the peak that they're using during our coincident peak. Um, so that we're able to, but to, and, and we'll let them know when those peaks are occurring so they can select to use less power. And if they do that, you know, the savings that we have for the system will be passed through to that customer. So there's no cost to any of the other ratepayers, they're just reaping some of the benefits that they're helping to create through their behavior. And it also allows our existing infrastructure to carry more load. So that, you know, there's system-wide benefits that will occur to them. Um, so we're focusing on the large customers and we've got a, um, you know, there are some challenges to doing that because the peaks are, um, becoming more difficult to predict. Um, but, so we'll be calling more peaks for, for, for customers to, to reduce their load. Um, but we think that it's a more effective way of getting them to, to change their behaviors. Um, and we're trying to give them the tools they need in order to, to, to reap savings. Um, and again, the savings that they reap will be savings that they help create. So, um, it really brings them into the process of controlling their peak use and giving them the information they need to make those load decisions. So we'll be doing further analysis on it, but I just wanted to present those two sort of rate ideas to you and let you know that we're working on them. Get some of your feedback and, and then move forward with the analysis, um, on those.
Right, question, go ahead, Robbie.
Communicate with the biggest commercial clients, you start the conversation.
Yeah, so, um, we, on our key accounts, we've been having ongoing conversations with them. We have given them all access to a, a portal, the Tangent Amp, um, portal that lets them see their load use. And then we send them messages when we expect a peak event to occur. Um, so they're, they're alerted when there's a peak event happening. Whether they see it in their email or, um, we don't know. So we'll communicate with them on the best ways to get, um, get that message to them and make sure we're getting into the right people within the company.
Are there questions? Okay, I see them, ready to move on? Okay, um, I just wanted to drop back on to number eight, by the way, and I had a note. Um, there is a Commissioner's award for somebody who serves on a commission more than ten years. I believe Mr. Talbot has served for more than ten years. Hmm. And so he should, it should be a point to get him recognized at the NEPA conference.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Can I, can I veto that? No, no, look at that, look at that smile. Hasn't been ten, I guess it has been.
I believe it's been ten.
Sorry, everybody, this is your chance, twenty thirteen. Do I get a raise?
Yeah, it's a hundred percent raise. Oh, you get a, you get a plaque.
Okay, well, thanks, Phil. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, very good.
We're going to get your final recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, ten years comes with a salad.
Comes with a salad, yeah.
I got the salad.
And cheddar, it's feeling good. All right, so, uh, uh, three, uh, three key points for, uh, the update tonight. One is staffing and personnel, which is always important. Um, so we have, last year we had a pretty successful intern program, we had three interns last summer. Um, we actually are also having, uh, a group of interns come back this year, uh, as another set of, one of the, actually one that was here last year. But we also added co-ops and so there's the intern program, which is basically the summer, and then the co-op program will go through the end of the year. Um, there are six of them, um, they're, uh, I think they're all here now, right? All, all of them, so, which is great. Um, the goal of that program is, is threefold primarily. Um, one of them is to have them learn more by applying their, 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 their classwork and their skills to real-world environments. And this is a real-world environment. Um, that learning is good for them, um, but it also provides value and contribution to RMLD. So they're doing some analysis and, and research, et cetera, just like they did last year. So that, that contribution to RMLD is, is the second piece. Um, and then the third piece is, you know, we, a, a lot of us here are enthusiastic about this, uh, the, the current state of the electric utilities. There's a lot happening here. And so part of the reason why having this, uh, program, the third reason is to take that energy and enthusiasm back to the various schools. Um, I don't, this year, I know we have Endocot, uh, we have Colby College, um, I don't, uh.
WPI.
We have WPI, um, Mashnaar Time.
Yes.
So the, the last point is for them to take their experience back to, uh, to the schools and classmates and friends. And as they, as they look at industries to go into and they finally graduate from, from their various programs that they actually consider, A, the electric utility and more importantly, RMLD. So there's, there's those three elements, one to learn, second to contribute, and three, we'd call it basically guerrilla marketing, for lack of a better expression, where they're taking, uh, what they learned back here. So that's, that's in place right now. So a total of six positions, and again, three of them are, are co-ops. Um, second big element, uh, the morale of the organization remains good. Obviously, it's, uh, spring moving into summer, so that's always good, but there's a strong morale around the organization, um, uh, which makes us all encouraged. Um, on that note, we have continued with the flex time for the non-line individuals. So we have the options of doing four ten-hour days or, um, five eight-hour days or a mix of four nines plus half a day on Friday. Um, that continues to work well, uh, with the organization. Um, what we did, well, four, uh, five weeks ago now is we figured out a mechanism to do that with the line team. So right now, the line team has the, the flexibility and we've got a work crew, so there's some limitations on it. Um, but, uh, so we've got the line crews, some of them are doing four ten-hour days and other ones are doing five eight-hour days. Um, the, uh, in the summertime, that gives us the benefit when we're out doing crew work, um, that ten-hour day, let's just get a little bit more work done on each individual day. So, um, we're doing that as a pilot, um, it's not part of any contract right now, but it seems to be going pretty well so far. Um, so those are, those are some quick elements on staffing. We have, um, we've filled several of the open positions, um, you guys have heard from, uh, our new HR Director, Sarah. Um, she's, uh, she's been very effective, we have six, uh, remaining open positions. Um, and we're, we're pursuing those six open positions, which is good. Um, second big topic is winter reliability, we've talked about this, uh, on an ongoing basis. This is, uh, as I mentioned earlier, it is, it is something that we take very seriously here. We, we are not, you know, our intention of taking it seriously is not to suggest that there is a, a, uh, a big issue, well, that there is a imminent threat coming down the road. However, um, you know, we need to be prepared. And so the issue of winter reliability, uh, goes to if we have an extended cold snap in the July, in the July, in the December, January, February timeframe, where, um, natural gas gets more directed toward heating buildings and not toward generation and oil reserves go down, um, that, that, uh, the generation stations run out of fuel. Um, and at that point in time, and again, this is not doom and gloom, it's not to say that it's as imminent or in any way, shape or form, but there's increasing risk associated with winter reliability. It is a, it is a significant issue that the, uh, um, the industry and particularly our group of MLPs are working on very effectively, but taking seriously with the ISO New England. Next Tuesday, there's a, a, a national meeting on this very topic. So anyways, it's, it's important. Um, we are taking provisions to, uh, to minimize risk to, to our customers. Um, we take that reliability charge very seriously. So on that note, um, we, last spring, um, we presented and you guys approved, uh, our intention to add ten megawatts of storage. Um, so we're finishing up some detailed contract stuff on that. Um, so that's in process, we hope to get that installed, um, in twenty twenty-four. These risks that I mentioned about winter reliability are partially tied to the retirement of Mystic, uh, which will be formally retired in May of twenty twenty-four. And then there's the question of the Everett Marine Terminal, which is a natural gas facility adjacent to it. Um, so those are some of the elements that are tied to it. But basically, the, the, the increased risk, which is low for winter reliability, is not till January of twenty twenty-five, it could be December twenty twenty-four. But anyways, um, some of the things that we're doing is we're putting, um, that first ten megawatts of, uh, storage in place. We've also, Bill and his team, um, issued a, uh, a request for proposals for another twenty megawatts of storage. Um, that we will come to you either in the July or September meeting for approval to pursue those. Those will all be under a PPA structure. Um, our view right now is that storage is still a very dynamic technology. So our view is, is, you know, from managing our risk, being conservative from a risk perspective, we will, our intention right now is to put together a, uh, uh, energy services agreement so that we don't own those assets for storage. Um, unlike the solar generation stuff where we do want to own those assets. So anyways, um, on the storage side, there's probably thirty megawatts that we're hoping to, in addition to the five that we already have, but thirty megawatts, three-hour duration, that we're hoping to get installed, um, in the second half of twenty twenty-four. That is not trivial, um, and there's more coming on that, but that's part of the, the update tied to winter reliability. And more importantly, you know, to capacity and transmission. The capacity and transmission savings of those battery systems is what pays for the savings and actually generates, um, additional margin for the utility by reducing those costs. But the secondary benefit is the reliability piece. The last thing that I wanted to just bring up to you, you know, we have been talking about within territory generation. Um, I'll talk to you in just a few moments about Burbank High Serena. But, um, we've talked a, a little bit, we've been working for nine months in Maple Meadows, which is a, a large landfill site, um, in the southwest portion of Wilmington. It has the opportunity for us to put somewhere between up to ten megawatts of solar on it, there's a lot of work to be done. It is not a trivial site, but, um, uh, with encouragement from several of you around the table and a lot of other individuals, um, we continue to make progress on that. Our intention will be to do a more formal, uh, request to actually acquire that land with a bunch of caveats. That'll probably be in September, we'll probably bring that forward to you guys in September. And of course, tied to that will be what we plan to do with that land and the land around it. So we view that as being part of the, um, contributing to the, uh, reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. Um, this Maple Meadows project will allow us to be more reliable by having generation within the territory. Um, it'll allow our, it will be at a lower cost due to a whole bunch of factors that I'll walk you through in more details. But it'll be lower cost than the wholesale cost of energy, um, partially due to the investment tax credit. Um, and by definition, solar is non-carbon and it has, uh, class one certificates tied to it. So that's, the update on Maple Meadows is that we're, we're progressing, look for, um, a request for, um, the update on Maple Meadows is that we're, we're progressing. Look for, um, a request for, um, formal approval to move forward with that in September. Um, and then the last topic, just for the GM update, is the load forecast. And so we talked very briefly about that in the, um, discussion on the, on the twenty twenty-two financials. Um, as you guys have probably all noticed, um, the temperature in, uh, New England since the beginning of the year has been relatively mild. Um, load are, uh, so energy bills are driven by a combination of the rates and the usage. Um, usage is, um, heavily influenced by, uh, weather, specifically air temperature. Air temperatures have been very, very mild. So our kilowatt hour sales, um, we are three to four percent below what we were a year ago. Um, there, you know, and we typically, and the spring is typically the low part of the load curve anyways. Um, we are, are looking carefully in terms of what the load's going to look like in July and August. Um, current forecasts are a normal summer, so not particularly hot. We'll see. Um, since our, um, energy costs, our fuel costs are passed through, as you saw from the earlier discussion, um, that will keep the, uh, customer bills relatively speaking low. Um, but it also impacts the cash that we, uh, we bring into the business. So one of the things that Ben and I are looking at, uh, uh, very carefully, uh, with, with Bill as well, is what's the load forecast going forward? What does that mean? Some cash coming in? Again, there's no risk right now, but, but we look at that very carefully because we'll probably end up the year roughly, um, right around what the kilowatt hour sales were, were twenty twenty-two. So load forecast is real critical. It drives, you know, and it's not just twenty twenty-three load forecast, but you know, I think there's general industry agreement that total load for the industry, you know, two decades down the road, two and a half decades down the road, it's going to be twice what it is now. But what does it look like over the next three, four, five, six, ten years? It goes back to some of the questions that Vivek was mentioning and you guys were also mentioning. You know, what's the proper pace for the investment in our infrastructure, realizing that when we make investments in the infrastructure, they're twenty or thirty-year investments. So the timing of those in terms of, and the, and the, the source of cash, et cetera, um, is going to be important in terms of how we manage that transition. And it's not a trivial transition, but it's a, it's a fascinating transition. The fourth point and the last point is, um, um, the, uh, the finance team under Ben's leadership, we, uh, submitted another, um, uh, another grant application, roughly five million dollars of a grant application. This one's tied to, uh, uh, public EV chargers. Um, we have a, a roadmap and a plan from now until twenty twenty-eight in terms of sequencing of what we think the, um, installation of public chargers, primarily level twos and, uh, uh, a couple handfuls of level threes in our territory. This grant would, would basically cover us, uh, cover pretty much all of them in reality, uh, which is great. So that is in addition. So that total number of grant applications that we have submitted, um, since January is forty-eight million dollars. So we are, we are in phase two. We're, we're in good shape on several of those. Many of them are multi-year projects. Um, but, uh, again, as we think about how we manage the business, you know, what's the timing of the investments? And how do we fund the business? And how do we, how do we, uh, how do we fund the investments? And then how do we staff the business as well? So those are just a quick four points in terms of, of, you know, quick manager, uh, general manager update. There's a lot more details to walk through, but, um, those are, those are important highlights. Any questions?
You brought up the EV chargers. Um, after the ones you've installed, like, I know those Yeah. ones, I drive by a lot of time, there's no car in there.
Yep.
Is there an ROI on that to say that when you put the investment there, that you're getting enough money to justify?
Yeah.
Or?
So, um, you know, location, location, location.
Right.
And the good thing about those is those were funded under the original grant. So there wasn't much of an investment. Were they, were they high-traffic areas? Probably not. Um, so that's part of it, you know, and we put them in, right? With minimal cost, you know, we made a, you know, I think we made some of the investment in terms of the actual installation and the state funds, um, paid for the equipment. Um, we're also learning about the types of equipment. You know, those, those are a little bit different style. Um, we've, we're finding, like, we now have, uh, amongst RMLD employees, um, we have public charging stations outs, outside here. We actually have four EVs in our, amongst our employees now, up from one a year ago. Um, there's actually three of them in this room right here. Oh, I say that, um, those are public chargers. There are occasion where a, where a local, when somebody is, is at one of those stations, so the the four of us need to figure out, okay, who gets to charge when. I say that with a smile. Um, so
I saw the one plugged in, so he pulled in.
Yeah, yep, yep. And so, you know, it's so, um, up on, on the Ash and, I mean, not Ash, on, on Haven and, uh, Main Street. You know, those are fairly well utilized. So we actually track the usage of them, but the two that we have in Wilmington are not, they're not high volume. And so we might figure, you know, what do we do with those in reality? So yes, that's part of, that's a part of the overall equation. So that, that has to happen, but you know, our goal is to minimize the investment by the rate payers to fund those systems. So where we can get, you know, cash or funding from other sources to fund those, then it gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of putting them in. But they're, they're, they're not going to be on every street corner, you know? If we look all the way out, you know, we, we estimate um, about sixty to seventy level-two chargers and about, I think, twenty-six or twenty-eight DC fast chargers by twenty twenty-eight. And that realistically, because most of the charging gets done at home.
Yeah.
And so
And that was on my kind. He was also saying, that was the experience.
Yeah, exactly right. So, you know, it's not, it's, it's important, right? And, but it's, it, it's not, it's not the key driver of the adoption of EVs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Location, location is so important. I mean, I, I went to the, go to the park this one, Corner Power Lake. And Wakefield has two EV, um, sta, charging stations right there, right off the highway.
Uh-huh.
So we need, and I think somebody in this commission once said you'd have something near the highway.
Could have been me.
Yeah. You know, and I, I think you got to find location nearer the highway.
Well, so, and that's, and that's part of it. Um, I'm familiar with both of those. I'm, I'm actually one of those two. And by the way, the northern one doesn't charge and the southern one does. And I've let, uh, the, the Peter Dion of the town of Wakefield know this. It's, it's kind of funny. It's like
Well, they were both in use when I, when I
Good, good, good. Well, they got it fixed. But, but yeah, look, I mean, it's location, right? And if you look at where our, our connection points, you know, we is, our, our territory, we are very fortunate in terms of, we have significant frontage on one twenty-eight and ninety-three, right? And so there's, but we don't own all the land around those pieces. So those original grants that we did for the first few, they had limitations. They had to be ministerly owned property, right? Which is probably part of the reason why we ended up where we did.
Yep.
Um, so as with this new grant, there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of, of not having to be so constrained. So you're exactly right in terms of where you put them. But again, EV chargers is, you know, in terms of the priorities, it is important, but it is, it is not I have to say this properly. It is an important part of it, but it's not the top priority of the stuff that we're working on, right? We have to get the substations built and the I mean, there's a lot of things we need to do. And, and I, I mentioned that from a perspective that there, you know, we are like, again, primarily Ben, but we are, we are driven to find additional dollars, um, to make the investment into our infrastructure, and that's, that's a benefit for all the rate payers.
Do these chargers show up on some sort of app? So when somebody's looking for a charger?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's several apps. Um, charge, I mean, there's, there's four really good ones, and then there's, I don't know, a couple dozen more. So, yeah, and it'll, and those type of driving directions. And is it available? And what's the rates? And they're actually pretty good. So, yeah, they're pretty good. Other questions?
Different drivers, not EV.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I have EV. But, so, um, you, you, you're talking about storage in general, in
Batteries.
Well, well, in territory generation, you have any, what you think about peak us being a peak energy provider with maybe some kind of facility in territory, meaning when the load peaks and your ISOs asking to tolerate, would you have consideration for maybe going out for an RFP? For someone putting something on RMLD property to generate during peak times?
For the transmission network?
For us and transmission. You know, you're going to be located. We're going to get a location that's going to be not, non-battery related though. I'm talking fuel. Either gas, oil-powered type facility, which is kind of contrary, but when you start talking about reliability and you're looking out three, four, five years and demand goes up and certain things go away, like missed it. There are no generation locations anymore. So these types of locations are, they're going to be everywhere. They're going to pop up.
Right.
It's going to become more and more critical, but if you can cohabitate them next to, say, a substation, I need to think about this till you mentioned it.
No, what? Go ahead. It's so much.
Start thinking about that. Yeah, yeah, you're jumping at the bit, but you might need one in North Reading. You might need one in Wilmington. You might, I, they got the substation located, but
Well, so maybe substation located, but you're more, you're more, you're, you're, your fundamental question is how do we look at generation within territory as part of, and not solar-based?
Well, reliability. I, I would, I would term reliability. So when the power goes off, we stay on.
Exactly right. So, so for that exact reason, you know, that's, that's the underlying strategy why we want to have significant within territory generation. And, and, and hear me out, hear me out. So, um, we happen to have, um, significant, um, natural gas pipelines going through our territory. Now, the issue with natural gas is the carbon. And so one of these we're looking at right now is carbon capture. So that when we propose something to you guys, it'll be a non-carbon solution that uses natural gas. So we are actually working on that right now. We are not ready to jump into that. But that requires a combination of land, which we are pursuing aggressively. I, I, I say a joke a little bit. We're in the land acquisition business. Seriously, we're in the land acquisition business. And on that note, um, we're, we're trying to work with the towns in terms of, of land that either, you know, that they're aware of, but, but privately held property. And the mechanism is going to come back to, hey, you know, where are you going to get the cash? Going back to the fundamental question to, to buy land, right? So what we're trying to look for is areas that are near either transmission systems, and we have two transmission lines that go through our territory, and/or near, near natural gas systems. There's Tennessee and there's Maritimes that go through our system. And then how do you get access to fuel? Well, most importantly, how do you deal with the carbon, right? So, so there's a whole, we, we're going to come back to you guys with some concepts of, of near-term for the element of reliability, which, you know, we need to generate within our territory. That's, that's, that's our core strategy right now. I'll lay that out more clearly in September. But there's some, there's some stuff that we're working on right now that have a combination of thermal storage, chemical storage, um, and, and natural gas. And we think there's an interesting solution there if we can, and, and there's a, there's a carbon capture solution part of that that actually would, would be a benefit to the, the local, the local area as well. As another revenue stream, selling carbon. So anyways, we'll come back. So heard loud and clear, and we're on it.
So I know people like Lube are trying to do stuff like this also.
Interesting to mention that. Next question.
Okay.
Maybe in a future meeting, could you tell us about the usage of the EV chargers since there is
We do a quarterly report to send. We'll share it with you guys, but yeah, absolutely. That'd be We actually, Bill, if you want to comment, right? Um, there's a, there's a, at Analog, right? They're having so much EV charger use. We own a good portion of them, um, that there was, you know, they're now trying to ask for our help to, when somebody's finished charging, can you boot them off so that the next person can come charge? So again, every, it's about location, right? But in that case, they're, they're oversubscribed.
They have fourteen. They're all full.
And
At Analog.
Oh, at Analog, yeah.
Yeah.
Good for them.
Then there's a bunch going in that, uh, Teradyne has a bunch already and they're trying to add more, so. Yeah. So again, you know, but we'll report on the ones that we own.
That's the usage.
Yeah.
Right. Good.
Any other questions for the general manager?
Where was it?
No, we'll launch at the Burbank.
Okay, Burbank. Uh, real quick. So we're, we're, we're giving you this intermediate report because, um, Marlene and I attended, um, attended, uh, a meeting between the select board and the board that manages the Burbank Ice Rink. Um, yeah, go just hit the next slide real quick. Whoever's got it. Um, so I, after this, I want to, we need to share this with the Board of Directors. Yeah, that's totally fine. Thank you. Um, so the, the, um, the Burbank Ice Rink is, uh, it's an ice rink on Simmons Way. It's in Reading. You guys probably all are familiar with it. Um, it's probably twenty-five years old. Anyways, it needs a new roof. And so that begged a question from the select board asking the board, um, of the, uh, Burbank Group, you know, can you guys do solar on it? So I'll cut to the, so we've, we've met with, uh, um, the, the, the manager of the rink, um, did some brainstorming, um, we, we are going to look, not, not going to look, we've done some preliminary estimates. We think that this building can, can basically support a three hundred and eighty um, KW array, which is, you know, it's a nice size array for a building like that. Um, we think that we could probably uncover through some of our programs, maybe ten, fifteen, maybe twenty percent out of their hundred and twenty thousand dollar annual, um, bill, electric bill to provide some savings from them. Um, there's probably time of use. There's a bunch of work that we're going to do for them. So this is in the past of several weeks. Um, we, at that meeting, there was a question, you know, should the, the solar array be tied to the roof? There is a program with the investment tax credits that you guys have heard from us several times. We, as, as an MLP now have access to. Um, so if we actually put that array in, we'll have an instant twenty or thirty percent investment tax credit in terms of that installation of that. Um, the, uh, so it's probably, and then given the fact we have very low rates, it probably, this, I'm giving you intermediate hypotheses at this point in time. It's likely that it would be, um, advantageous for the arena and for the town. The RMLD actually owns the array and installs the array. And before we do that, we'll come back to you for approvals, et cetera, as opposed to Burbank owning the array. Um, we would, that's a fairly simple building. When I say it's a simple building, it has lighting and, um, HVAC and, uh, a chilling, a refrigeration system for the rink. And so one of the things that we're trying to look at in the context of, of being more efficient in terms of the use of energy is, is there a, is there a way that RMLD can, and I'll use the word control carefully, but, uh, uh, help the ice rink manage the use of energy between the, uh, ice sheet, which you want to keep cold. And for example, the stands or the bleachers that you want to keep warmer. So, so there's the heat pump technology, which you guys know moves heat from one space to another. Anyways, we're looking at some opportunities maybe to do that. And then on top of that, going back to the Coincident Peak Program that Bill just mentioned a few minutes ago. Um, the, um, what Ed mentioned to us is that, um, if it's a two or three-hour period during peak hours, he can actually turn his refrigeration system off. His peak load's about a hundred and fifty KW, so I'm going to guess about a hundred of that is due to the refrigeration system. So there's another place where, where we can help them save money and save us money too, as RMLD by doing peak management. So there's a bunch of different places. It's not big and significant, but it's a great pilot area in a relatively simple, relatively simple, small-scale building where we can do some creative business models. So
Do the chilling at night or something like that?
There's a whole bunch, there's a, there's a whole bunch of pieces in terms of, of moving heat around in that building because you've got a that ice sheet is a significant thermal mass, in this case, a negative mass. And so how do you turn that into, so for example, you know, one of the projects that the interns are working on is, you know, has somebody else done some creative things with ice rinks? More than just putting solar on top, but you know, using, using that, that, um, uh, sheet of ice as, as part of a, an energy optimization system. So there's working process. Um, I'm going to send this as an intermediate update to, again, uh, Marlene and I were just there as observers, but we took an action that had to actually start this ball moving forward. We had a couple of questions to ask, and one is, would the roof qualify for an ITC if it was built at the same time with the solar system? Um, our initial answer is no. On, um, any sort of structural enhancements would need to be, could be, but just the replacement of a roof doesn't qualify. So we're going to basically say the Burbank guys should continue down the road, but the new roof, and while we work on looking at solar and some of these other pieces. There's also a possibility of this being in qualifying for green communities. There's a bunch of different ways for this to be a win-all around, but we look at it as being a test case. So that's just a quick update. Um, it's an intermediate. We were requested to give you guys a quick update on it, uh, because the commissioner, um, Marlene and I attended it. Anything else, Marlene, you want to add to it?
Just that we're meeting again.
Yep.
Eventually, July.
Yep. So just quick update, but we, we think this has got an opportunity to do some creative things. So, good.
Any questions for the questions? Well, the next item on the agenda is our schedule. Uh, so we got the joint meeting with the, uh, with the Board of Selectmen on to, yeah, to fill the vacancy. Uh, then we got the July, you can see the, in the agenda, you can see the meeting dates. Anybody have any conflicts, any of those dates that you're aware of?
Uh, starting September, we can go back to Wednesdays.
You went to Wednesdays? You want to go to Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesdays. I, I have a tough time at Thursday.
Okay, so we go, so you, so September, October, November, December, we go back to a Wednesday?
I'm not proud of that.
What about Cab?
I'm.
You, you good with these days?
Yeah, I know, because I'm aware of.
Yeah, George, you, you, you guys are usually having conflict. You guys.
It's interesting. My office is moving to Winchester. So.
That's good.
Yeah. So I'm moving to, the firm is disbanded.
Oh, no.
So, and I move as a.
So there's, there's a, or there's one Wednesday in there.
So I moved into Winchester. So we may be a lot easier to get.
Yeah.
So if you want, if you want to go to seven, I believe that's, that's due.
Give it a whirl.
So seven o'clock, seven o'clock.
If you want to go to Wednesday, is he not wanting to do that?
What I was saying is if we keep our dates the same and they move to Wednesday, they're not going to be a day ahead of us. So we can never recommend it.
That's an inherent problem. Yeah. So we want to, can you guys go to Wednesday's time?
My Wednesday is usually pretty packed, you know, and you're a problem on Wednesday. Schedule us.
So, so when you fix, when you fix the. More of a commissioner meetings and then we'll figure out how to adjust our schedules.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try.
So you work out that because. Yeah, exactly.
And we wouldn't be on the same day.
Yeah. So, so when you resolve, resolve that schedule and then we'll work on it.
First and second Wednesday are definite. The twentieth works of, of July, right? That's. Right?
Yeah.
Let's just get as many done as we can real quick. So the twentieth of July is good for everybody.
Yeah.
And then September, so the, the ELC is going to meet on September thirteenth, Wednesday. I know that starts getting conflict with you guys, but do you want to just, you know, we can figure out later, September, do you want to do the thirteenth or? You don't know yet.
I can't do the thirteenth.
End of thirteenth, of course. I'll figure out the rest of it with you guys. Okay.
So, so, so we go, we go to the twentieth.
Of course, it's like a box, yeah. Third and fourth.
So we're set on July twenty only right now, right?
So we have fixed on the twentieth.
We're going to the, yeah, the twentieth, we're going to July twentieth.
Yeah.
It'll be in place. So it's September where we go the day before.
Okay.
So go Wednesday. Yeah, I mean, we could, I, I don't know. I mean, we could probably start at seven, the twentieth, if that's okay. We can set the meetings at seven.
So there'll be Wednesdays and I'll start at seven instead of seven thirty. And then we'll figure out with Vivek. Maybe just me, maybe we have you guys meet a week early on Thursday if that's better.
So, so let, let's, let's go with the twentieth and then we'll, we'll figure out what George, your schedule.
Say that again Vivek, sorry.
Go with the twentieth as scheduled, July twentieth. And then we can, George and Dennis can see what conflicts they have.
Okay.
Okay.
We're on the set. I'll get.
The twentieth.
Yeah, it's fine. At seven?
Seven.
I'll send out a revised list.
Right, that's fine. And do we have cab coverage for the meeting on the twentieth, the BOC?
We had made some plans. So she did that last written.
Cab on the front, uh, cab coverage for the board meeting on the planet is done.
Okay. And that's also the two meeting meetings. So. All right, very good. So our schedule's set. So.
I think we're up to thirteen, I think. What team?
Down thirteen, thirteen.
So September thirteen.
Thirteen is yours. No, you're up to item thirteen.
Okay, sorry. All right, sorry, item thirteen. Okay, so we're going to adjourn the. Yeah, meeting.
I'll, I'll move that the RMLD citizen advisory board adjourned regular session.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm in favor. Roll call, what? Vivek, Sonya.
George, you're right.
Ken Walter, aye.
Jason Small, aye.
Dennis Kelly, aye.
Guys, uh.
Thanks.
Okay, gentlemen, it's always a pleasure to have you here.
See you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you much.
So we got, uh.
Yes, we got item fourteen. So if you want to make the motion.
Yeah, I'll get your motion moved that bid two thousand twenty-three test twenty-seven station three pole yard paving be able to Cassidy court. For fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, which goes to MG Hales thirty, paragraph thirty-nine M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendations of the general manager.
Is that second? You should tell it seconded. It's just great. You need to set up.
Okay, so this is a, uh, so one of our substations is, um. In station three, this is the one up in North Reading, um. We store poles up there and transformers up there. Um, that's a. A, a significant, the part that's not covered by, um, electrical equipment or by the battery or by the generator. On the south side, it is, uh, um, gravel and mud. Um, not particularly good in terms of moving, uh, either equipment in and out of it. Um, whether we're taking deliveries of transformers and poles or when our crews go in to pick stuff up. So the. Recommendation is not to pave the whole thing, but to pave, um, the area around where the trucks tend to go. Um, the original proposal, um, when we put together the budget was to do both a binder coat and a, or a scratch coat, as they call it, and a top coat. Um, we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that in, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget. Um. What we ended up, um, doing is after discussions with several paving organizations. Is decided to just put the, uh, the binder coat on, the scratch coat on, um, again, for the benefits of, uh. Allowing the trucks to move it more easily in and out of there. The, uh, we had to go through a bidding process since it was over fifty thousand dollars. Um, it was sent out to eleven companies. Um, there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting, um, on site. There were two companies that attended that pre-bid meeting. We actually received a bid from one company, Cassidy Corporation. And that bid was for fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, um, which was. Well, below the hundred and fifty thousand that we had originally budgeted. Um, so the request is to, uh, award that bid for fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars to Cassidy Corporation.
Didn't you reach out? You only got one bid?
I, you know, I, I, I don't know the answer to that one. Bill, I wasn't as close to this one. Um. There's a lot of construction going on right now and this is not a big project.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm going to base, you know. That, that, that's all like, that's my best hypothesis right now.
Square foot area is it?
Um. So it, it's, it's probably the equivalent of, uh. Two house lots. It's, 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 uh, it's sizable. Go ahead.
Well, well, I, I mean, uh, uh, did, did, um. We reduced the overall area? Was it the same area? Did you cut down the area being paved?
No, we just, we didn't cut down the area to pay. We just basically we said a binder coat only, no top. Yeah, so that was, that was a piece of it, right? Most of the work is prep work and then the binder coat, top coat is pretty.
That's a yacht. They're going to destroy it anyway, trucks. So. You know, that's just part of the nature that they beat it up.
Yeah, they beat it up. Exactly right.
Yeah, screw a body coat. Yep.
I could. I'll have a, I guess next time I do, I'll have a, a, a picture of it that I can show up on the screen. To see the yard, but it's, it's, uh, it's the non-area where. Okay, can you bring it up?
You got a Google picture?
Yeah, we'll try it. Let's see if we can bring up Vivek. We have this technology. Let's see if we can use it.
See, we'll get to, we'll pick it up on Google.
Let's go to Google.
It's insanity.
Okay.
That, that, that's full. You know, like the full, um. Reconstruction, yeah, it's super expensive. Yeah. I just got a thirty.
I know.
Thirty by eight. On, on a public roadway that was, uh, seventy thousand.
Thirty by eighty?
Thirty, thirty by eight.
Feet?
Yeah, eighty feet long, thirty feet wide.
Wow.
Yeah. That's two, two coats. There's a binder in the top.
So what Wall Street costs. Okay, can you guys all see this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so. See the mouse? Come on mouse. So this is where the, uh, battery system is. This is where, this is, this is all gravel. This is where the generator is, all gravel. This is the actual substation itself, just down here, the one fifteen KV lines. This is all gravel here. Um, this area in here is where the transformers, this is the poles. So basically, and you can see we also have some, where we had some truck parks along there as well. Those are the subcontractors, um, that work, um, uh, power line. So basically this area, so. Excluding this area and excluding this area and coming down here is the area that would be paved. So it's a thoroughly sizable spot. It's, it's in, you know, we're trying to get, you know, you can see. That this is, this area right here is gravel, but the gravel has been pushed down into the mud. When you run in heavy trucks over gravel on the mud, you get. Gravel mud.
Yeah.
Interesting. Pardon me? I may say that. Walk me through that again. No, just kidding. All right. I didn't hear it. I'm sorry, Dave. I just said gravel mud and I just said interesting. Anyways, yeah, um. All right. Part of just, you know, I'm just trying to make the stuff. Anyways, you, you know the background. Did you move?
This, go ahead, sorry.
Did you move? Did you make the move?
Yeah, I just want to add more. This company Cassidy Corp, that's a new one. I don't think we've had one like this before. You've done, the due diligence has been done on this, this company?
Um, I will, I will make due diligence part of, if you, you know, contingent on successful due diligence, if you'd like.
Okay.
I, I have not dealt with them yet.
Company's been around, paper out of stone for. He or her years.
Okay, I mean, that's a name I don't recognize.
Okay, thanks.
It works with the partner of theirs and.
Okay, all right. So I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that then. Okay. So move the second for the discussion. All of us in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, that motion carries. Going to a policy review.
That, that was the due diligence. Okay.
policy five.
It's all right. Um. Have that in my, my book. That's okay. So, um. What we, you have in the book? So we did with policy. So obviously we were in the, we tried to do a new policy, at least one. Um, all of them need to be reviewed every three years. So this one is travel. Um, the fundamental change we made here, and two fundamental changes, um, and you, you saw it in there, um. We did some verbiage clarification and spell checking, all that kind of stuff. But the, the big thing is, um. This was, you know, five or six pages of what we would call procedures as opposed to policy. So what we fundamentally did is we're moving the actual detail of the procedure. So an internal procedure document, because this is a policy from the board. And we basically streamlined it down to, um, I think it's two pages. Um, the other major change we did is the way it was written before. It was the supervisor's responsibility to make sure that the employee submitted proper document, not proper documentation, but just submitted. Or reimbursement. Our belief is that if the employee incurs a cost on behalf of RMLD. And they want to get paid, they should take the responsibility to fill out the form and submit it, not the supervisor. Just, we just thought that was, you follow what I just said, right? Yeah, so we're putting the responsibility back on the employee that wants to be reimbursed. Um, and then the last element we did at the very end, um. Can you just scroll down to the, the very last page there? So, um. Little bit, just a little bit lower down. Uh, no, it's right there. All right. Okay, great. Yep. Section, section two. So. We modified the verbiage that the board is responsible for authorizing in advance the general manager's reimbursable travel. So like, when I go on these different trips, um, I have to ask permission for you, which is great. But, um. The recommendation is where an individual trip exceeds two thousand dollars. So if it's less than two thousand dollars, um. Uh, and we can change that number, but if it's less than two thousand dollars, I will alert you. But if I'm, if I need to go someplace, um. I want to alert you, but not have to ask permission if I want to be reimbursed. Does that make sense? That's the, probably the only more unusual thing of this whole thing. Did, did, where'd you come up with the two thousand threshold? And how do we do that calculation? I mean, we did some.
We looked at essentially, you know, cost of travel. If it's, if airfare is, is factored into it.
Yeah.
Trying to make it reasonable without breaking the bank.
About the day, that's five dollars flight, you're somewhere for three days, it's two thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the, the, it used to be there was no threshold that we authorized it, right? Which is silly.
You authorized it, really?
But which is silly. I agree.
Yeah.
But I mean, I just wondered why it, two thousand, I could see under five hundred, but why do we? I don't know.
Make it a thousand. I mean.
I would just think that you couldn't have planned anything with five hundred bucks.
Right.
You go to a hotel, it's three hundred plus minimum of a hundred dollars a day.
No, 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 I get it.
So, so five hundred dollars a day for meals, lodging and travel. And then if you went somewhere for two days on a trip or three days, it's kind of hover right around three thousand bucks. So that's. Two thousand dollars. I, I, right there. I, I mean, I mean, I, I, that's.
Not, not to nickel and dime anybody, but would anybody have a problem with one thousand? Just so that. Not, not you, but not, not as future GM.
I get it.
Could make.
Thousand dollars.
A lot, lots of eighteen hundred dollar trips and we would never know about it until a year later. So. Let's just make, let's make it a thousand. That's totally, I'm, just, just something not zero. Yeah.
He, that's all. I mean, nobody wants to create. Well, yeah, but we wouldn't even know if, if.
Okay.
I think we, we have so few actual responsibilities here on the board.
Yeah, but we're pretty good at keeping you up today with.
You are, you are. So we're all agreed on a thousand.
Make the motion.
Okay, that's fine. Um.
Move that the, uh, move that the RMLD board of commissioners approve policy five training and travel as. As amended to say.
Say.
One thousand dollars in RT under Reading municipal light board responsible for authorizing. General managers reimbursement travel where an individual trip exceeds one thousand dollars.
You got.
Under recommendation of the gentleman.
Second. You got it. You got it, Erica? Okay.
Uh, same motion, just changed two thousand to one thousand.
Change. So he's basically saying move that the RMLD board of commissioners approve policy five training revision. Um, as presented with the change that, uh, I think it's D one. Section D one.
Yes.
Be changed with the, the two thousand be changed to one thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
And then.
Did we vote?
We haven't voted, but, uh, then is that motion seconded?
It was seconded. I seconded.
Okay, Dave seconded. All of the favors raised right here. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, we're up to adjournment.
What about the D two? Where does responsible for moving, uh, these capital?
You do that anyways.
We do it anyway.
Doesn't belong, this is. This doesn't belong in the travel policy. Yeah, we, you, you have that responsibility. Already.
Okay.
Thank you for killing all that crap.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for improving our, our policies and procedures.
Okay, you want to make motion, George?
Um. Move that the board of commissioners adjourn regular session.
Second.
All right, move, say it's roll call, what? Mr. Sonya, Mr. Spalter, Mr. Kel, Mr. Burden, better. We are a jerk.
Thank you.